This year is Russell Russell's.
How's it going?
Fifteen seconds. Six minutes in the record.
Good evening, everyone.
Fifteen minutes in the air.
Reconvening and open meeting these December first Rapid County Board of Supervisor meeting. We did not have a closed meeting and Supervisor Comer is unable to attend this evening due to personal reasons, so.
Sorry.
It's okay. We have a public hearing this evening with regards to the 2026 amended budget. Is Bonnie bringing that one up?
Yes.
Yes.
I am here, yes ma'am. So, the state code requires localities to hold a budget public hearing whenever amended amendments to the annual budget through supplemental appropriations exceed 1% of the adopted budget. The board through November has approved changes to the fiscal 26 budget totaling $453,000 and that is 0.9% of the original budget. So, any supplemental appropriations, supplemental changes thereafter, obviously would cause the budget to exceed that one, the changes to exceed that 1% requiring this public hearing tonight. So, there are a number of adjustments. There's $451,000 in adjustments related to the school's true-up of appropriations for additional and carryover state, federal, and grant funding. There is an adjustment here for $300,000 which is use of the courthouse security fees to fund a portion of the network modernization project. I want to be clear, this is not $300,000 in addition to what the board has already approved in concept. This is just making that actual adjustment which we've had to hold off until this public hearing. There is $100,000 to reinstate budget adjustments, budget previously borrowed from the building envelope repair project to make headway for other adjustments that needed to be done more timely. And so, this $100,000 is making the building envelope repairs project whole. There's $9,818,000 use of restricted sheriff's asset forfeiture funds for cost incurred for the sheriff's office K-9 and related K-9 expenses. And then finally, there's $482,000. That is use of the restricted law library funds for maintenance of the required law library. And those are the adjustments that are part of this budget public hearing.
Thank you, ma'am.
Everything was advertised in the newspaper as it was supposed to. The documents have been in our office available for public inspection.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak during this public hearing, if you would please give us your name and district when you come up. And I'm going to limit the time to three minutes per person, please. All right, not seeing any hands in the courtroom. We do have a few people on Zoom. Anyone wishing to speak during this public hearing, please raise your Zoom hand and be recognized. All right, not seeing any hand raised. I will close the public hearing and open up any discussion to the board.
Bonnie, I know it'd benefit me and probably benefit the public if you could maybe just drill down a little bit into the nature of the, as you described them, true-up adjustments on the school side. And importantly, I think you stated upfront that none of these changes are related to additional appropriations of funds from the county general fund at all. I think you characterize them as grant, federal, state. And those are all, all, those words are all music to my ears because there are no local dollars coming into that true-up. But I think it would be good for everyone to understand the nature of those because that's the main driver here on the 1%, right?
Yes, yes, that's the main driver. $451,000 is, is the total of these adjustments. So, there's additional state funding from the Virginia Tiered System of Supports Program. That's $40,000. And I'm sorry, I'm not going to know the program details.
That's fine.
Of these, that's $40,000. There is a grant SBMH that totals $234,000 for the schools. The REACH Grant, $45,000. PATH Grant, $25,000. Headwaters Spark Camp, $6,918. The Headwaters Grant for Farm-to-Table, $25,000. And then revenue from online auction, which I think this is likely, online auction of surplus property, property being things that the school are no longer using, maybe a vehicle that's no longer in use or something of that nature, $15,890.
And is it, is it reasonable to say that, and I understand you can't speak to the substance of any of these grant programs in particular, but is it reasonable to assume that these funds are so narrowly earmarked that it would not mean, or it would not lead to a reduction in our local transfer to the schools, meaning that these funds would have to be used for specific programs and not general operations that we fund?
I would think that would largely be the case, yes.
Because I would think if there was an opportunity for us to get some money back in exchange for some of these dollars flowing in, and it adds up to not insignificant amount, we would know about it, I would think, right?
I would expect that we would, that would have been communicated to us, yes.
Okay. I think maybe as a follow-up question for the superintendent, and I wasn't really ready to address this with her this morning, or this afternoon, whenever it was this afternoon, that's right. But it would, it would just be good to understand or confirm that none of these dollars could be translated into county local support for general operating expenditures, just so that I can look my constituents in the collective eye and let them know that I at least asked that important question. I think that was the main thing. And again, you said we, at the outset, you said we did not hit 1%. We're just short of it, but you rounded up?
No, all adjustments to date that the board has already approved are just below the 1%.
Okay.
So, the $451,000 related to the schools and all the others that I, that I went through, those are well over. That would push us well over the 1%.
I see, I got it, okay. Yeah. I'm reading it.
489 would be 1%.
I got it, I'm reading the fine print now, okay. That's all I have. But yeah, if we could just get confirmation from the superintendent that these dollars, definitely because of earmarked provisions in the grants, cannot be exchanged for local expenditures, local transfer for school expenditures, that would make me feel better.
Thank you, Bonnie, for the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
If, I don't, I mean, I move this along, I'll put forward a motion that we adopt the provided resolution amending our fiscal year 2026 budget and updating the related FY 2026 appropriations.
We have, we have two resolutions. If we could do the budget first.
Okay, so I will amend my motion. I'll put forward a motion that we adopt the provided resolution amending the fiscal year 2026 budget.
One second.
You have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, roll call vote. Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Woodson?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
And I also.
I will follow that up with a motion to concurrently update our fiscal year 2026 appropriations.
One second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
When, in the future, when this is fueled by a school spending, or school spending, it would really be great if we could have a representative from the school here.
Yeah, it's a good point. It's unfair to Bonnie, I'd say.
All right. If there's no other discussion, roll call vote again. Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Woodson?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
And I also.
That's a good point.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thanks, Bonnie.
All right, now we're on public comment for the evening. Anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized and give us your name and your district. And again, three minutes discussion, please. Yes, ma'am.
Anita Ramos Hampton District. I want to thank Christine and Van for all the work they've done, the years they've been here. I agree with Christine to disagree in an agreeable way. This board has been very good at that, to tell you the truth. We don't always see eye to eye, but we see eye to eye on a lot of things. That's what we found out among this group. And I appreciate all the time and work you've put in. Van, you are so full of energy. You have so many things going on. I can't imagine that you won't sleep for the next week when this is all over. But anyway, I want to thank you both. It's, it's been wonderful. The people that are taking your places will never replace you for the individuals, wonderful individuals that you both are. And I'll miss you, but I got a feeling you'd both be dropping in every now and then to say something, won't you? So, anyway, thanks again, very, very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, no court, hands in the courtroom. Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak during public comment, please raise your Zoom hand. All right, not seeing a Zoom hand, I will close public comment. And thanks to Bernie, who is here to speak to the Benevolent Fund. She couldn't be here during the day, but I appreciate you coming out this evening.
First of all, thank you very much for your interest in knowing what the Benevolent Fund does. We're a small organization, but I think we make a huge impact in this community. You have the report here, and I just want to touch on a few things just to let you know because people think that we are just a handout organization, and we are not. We have a bridge program that helps people move, become more self-sufficient, and that program currently has six people in there. And we just finished a financial awareness class that we did in October and November, and it was a very successful class. Each person was matched up with a coach, and the coaches learned as much as the people that were participating. So, it was a really great thing. We're going to do another one next year. We'll have another class coming up in the spring. The other thing that I, two other things I just want to touch on is, there is an organi, not an organization, but there's a group of us that meet once a month, and we call it the inter-agency meeting. And that meeting includes the Rapid Home, the Benevolent Fund, the Food Pantry, Encompass, and Department of Social Services. And the reason it was started was so that we could better serve clients that are really having a challenging time. We started this about four years ago, and we've been going every month that we meet. And we all share what's going on within our organizations, and, but the primary focus is really to focus on clients that are in some need. And we have a lot of overlap, being such a small community. So, that is a really, I wanted to let people know that because a lot of people don't know that that little group meets every month, and it's not open to the public because we talk about clients, unless we invite someone in to give us information about something. So, just want to let you all know that a little bit. And then the other thing that we do is, that we have started doing is microloans. And for another part of it is, is, you know, as handouts, people become dependent on them. But with loans, we help people find a better way to be involved in their money and to be involved and be responsible for their money. So, we now currently have 11 microloans that we have with people, and they range from people that have needed roofs to people who have needed new cars. So, that's a really great, it's people that cannot get loans through a conventional way. They really would never be able to go to a bank and get one. We also know that those people probably won't pay us back. Like, some of those people were like, maybe not, and we've had to close out a few of them. But the majority of people have been paying them, and we've had several people who have paid their loans back. So, just to let you know that we are working on all different ends of things within our community, not just giving handouts, but also working to help people move along in their lives. Any questions?
Sure, I have a question. Thank you, Bernie, for coming and presenting.
You're welcome.
How has this past year been?
So, you know, everybody's been, you know, we go to these, also once a month, there's a mental health roundtable, and we hear a lot of information there about what's going on, and everything is hurry up and wait. You know, like, we're kind of just sitting right now. The state won't be doing anything, making any big changes till next year. So, we have not seen any impact, even during the shutdown. We did not see any increase in services. The Food Pantry had some, but we did not. And so, I think we're just kind of bracing for next year to see what's going to happen at the end of the state fiscal year and see what happens also with, you know, the, with insurance and things. So, that will be, those two things will be a pretty big impact. But this year has been actually a little bit, we've done less, we've passed out less money this year than we have than last year. So, I think next year could be, not next year, probably 2027 will probably be a bigger impact. But who knows yet? We don't know. We all sit there and go, okay, hurry up and wait, so. Yeah.
Well, thank you for all the work that you do in the community.
You're welcome.
Huge, huge, huge service to our, to the members of our community. So, thank you. It's hard work.
I just had a few questions. I posed the same question to Ms. Curtis from the Food Pantry. So, could you just talk about your current fiscal condition at the Benevolent Fund? The word "fund" is important.
It is very important. We're in a really good position right now. And that was only because this year, we, every year we do our, our annual dinner, and we had an amazing dinner and amazing money came in from that. So, that's really has helped us, you know, like, this year was a really good year. And I don't know if any of you got our, our annual appeal, but as you noticed, you might have seen, "Appeal" was crossed out and said, "Thank you," because we were pushing really hard for people to give us donations. We are really grateful to the, this community is an amazing community, and they always step up when we need funding and stuff. So, we are really doing well. And part of that, another part of that is, is there is another organization that gave us a chunk of money for home repairs. That was two years ago, we got that, and we've used up a good bit of that money. We've also set aside some of that money for a larger project, and we just haven't come across a larger project yet, a home repair project. So, we're kind of, that, it might look like we have a lot of money there, but, you know, in comparison to all the other organizations, I think we're all about the same.
And then, so, obviously donations, huge funding source. Do you benefit from any grant money?
Oh, yes, we have, you know, the usual suspects, PATH, Northern Piedmont Community Foundation.
Okay.
And two private foundations that help us out. So, and we, it's, I think in here I said, it's about 50/50 individual donations versus grants that we get.
And then the last question across the, currently you said you have 11 microloans extended out. Do you know the, the aggregate value of those loans? Are you?
They're about $44,000.
In total?
Yeah.
Okay, very modest. And, and what's, is that a typical number of loans that you carry per year? Could vary a lot?
We just started this, loans in the last year, really started doing that because we felt like it was really a good way for people to pay back and be connected, because most people want to do something. And if they can pay back with a loan, that's fabulous. And some of our loans are $50 a month, and we are fine with that. Like, that is like, good, you're contributing, and it's all going back into the pot to go back out, so.
It's a great program.
Yeah, we're really excited about it. It's, most of them, I shouldn't say most of, all of them are 0% interest loans because...
I was going to ask, yeah.
Why, you know?
Yeah.
What's the point? So, I, I anticipate that that will, that project will continue.
It's a great, great idea. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do appreciate the transition from what I felt like years ago was really just helping pay an electric bill, or, you know, here's, here's the money and good luck to actually education. It feels like you're hitting some folks that weren't lucky enough to go through family futures in the school system, and you're actually educating people so that this isn't a repeat. They can get through this one with the education and then learn how to budget or, you know, take care of themselves moving forward. And I really like that the fund has, I'm sure in your leadership led a lot of that transition. I really appreciate that.
Thank you. It's been very exciting to watch. And my, you know, my whole thing is, we're a small community, 7,000 people. The Benevolent Fund only serves Rapid County people. And, you know, when I fill out grants, I was like, how many people are you going to affect this year? And I'm like, five, you know? And to me, I don't care if I can get two people, we can get two people that can move out of asking for assistance several times a year and into doing their own thing, getting a new job, getting educated, hallelujah. So, I'm always about, you know, in all the things we do here in this county, it's not about the numbers, it's about the effect that we have on people, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks a lot, thank you, Bernie.
All right, moving on to the presentation, Robinson Farmer Cox Associates did our audit 2025.
Thank you so much.
All right, good evening. My name is Josh Roller. I'm with Robinson Farmer Cox, here tonight to present the audit report in front of you for fiscal year 2025. This is still in draft form, so we've already gotten a round of changes that are not implemented in there. So, you know, we have plenty of time in between now and the deadline of December 15th to get all changes made. Any questions that you guys may have in between the next week or two, feel free to run by me, and I'll be happy to reach out. I know there's not been enough time to kind of go through that whole document, or really probably any of the document, to have any real questions tonight. So, happy to field questions, you know, as they come up in the upcoming weeks. There should be a two-page letter as well with your audit report there. This is the standard communication required at the end of the audit process. The one thing here, I'll point your attention under the first page there, Significant Audit Matters. There was a new GASBIA accounting standard implemented this year, GASBIA 101, related to compensated absences. This did require a restatement of beginning balances just on the entity-wide full accrual statements. This doesn't affect any fund balance in any fund. And this is kind of statewide, all governments are going to be implementing this, so nothing out of the ordinary. But from there, that's your standard communication, that's kind of year to year, there's no difficulties encountered performing the audit, no disagreements with management. We had no material or no adjustments at all to get the financials materially correct for this year. And then into the report, I'll point your attention to a couple of pages. Page seven, page seven and eight is our independent auditor's report. This is where we are issuing an unmodified opinion for the year, which is a clean opinion, it's the best opinion we can give. The second page there of that opinion letter, page eight, talks a little bit about management responsibility to the financials, as well as the auditor responsibility to the financials. Management's responsible for the design, implementation of internal controls over financial reporting with the goal of presenting financial statements free of material misstatement. The auditor responsibility on the other side of that is to develop an audit plan, to test those controls, test account balances as it relates to the risks of the financial statements to come to our opinion of unmodified opinion that they're, the financials are materially correct. The couple of financial statements I'll, I'll touch on, page 16. Page 16, Exhibit Three, is your governmental funds balance sheet, lists out the five different governmental funds of the county. And then this is tied into two pages forward, Exhibit Five. Exhibit Five shows those governmental funds, and that's your statement of revenues, expenditures, change in fund balance for the year. You can see the first column there is your general fund. The very bottom of that, there is a change in fund balance in the general fund this year, an increase of $28,000. And for all governmental funds, that far right column, a total increase of $119,000. And tying into that statement, flipping forward quite a bit, page 97. 97 is your general fund budgetary comparison schedule. This lists out a lot more detail from that Exhibit Five, and it also lists out your original budget, final budget, and actual between the different, all revenues and expenditures for the year. Page, on page 100, it shows total revenues and total revenues for the year, let's see, were $218,000 more than your final budget. And on the other side of the coin there, page 102, your total expenditures of $22,812,000 was 1.4 million under your final amended budget there. And flipping forward through a lot of the report again, the last couple of things I'll touch on are the other two letters that are kind of generated by us. Page 153 is the auditor's report on internal controls over financial reporting. We don't issue an opinion on internal controls on financial reporting, but we have no issues to disclose here. There were no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, so a clean, a clean report there. And then two pages forward, page 155, this is where we have issued an unmodified opinion as it relates to uniform guidance. This is what governs the federal compliance piece of the audit. And in our testing over the major programs we had to do this year as part of the audit, it kind of varies depending on size, last time they were audited, et cetera. We have a clean opinion, no matters to be disclosed there either. And then from there, happy to field any questions you guys may have now. Like I said, don't anticipate, you got through the whole report here in the last five minutes, but happy to, you know, field any questions.
You say it every year.
Yeah, I know, it's, next year.
Well, you did the highlights for us, so I appreciate that. You said that, well, I feel like it was just yesterday that you were here.
They all kind, all the years kind of run together, yeah.
They really do. This is a draft.
Correct.
And when do you think the final, maybe you've already said this?
So, I guess it kind of depends a little bit. I would think probably this week we'll get through all the changes. It has to still go through, you know, our internal review process as well. That should be at the end of this week. I would anticipate middle of next week at the latest, you know, we're kind of, you know, we'll kind of have it approved from our end, we'll then wait from management, once they have the approval, probably maybe run it by you guys as well, you know, this is the final revised draft. Any further questions? Yeah, yeah, so.
Can you give us a flavor of what changes will be implemented? I mean...
It's a lot of, you know, just glancing at the email that I got, a lot of them were the very first page there, the, you know, Board of Supervisors, the other officials, some of those need to be updated, you know, that's just from last year, so we got updated like that. I don't anticipate any numbers changing.
That's more outside it, yeah.
Yeah.
So, like, housekeeping things?
Correct, yeah. Grammar, yeah.
State deadline is December 15th?
Correct.
That all this will be submitted through to the APA?
APA, yeah, yeah. Yeah, at that point where, you know, that December 15th deadline will have the report finalized, we'll have the APA comparative cost transmittal together as well that goes to them, that that's the, the form of report that they use for their annual compiled comparative cost report for all counties. That that's the, the form of report that they use for their annual compiled comparative cost report for all counties as well. Let's go.
Um, you have more? Okay. I was just gonna say, I, I saw some of your colleagues, Debbie and Donna and I were down at the VACO conference. And I was singing your praises. And I think I even joked that you'll give us about five minutes to review those.
It might have been less than five minutes this year.
No, but I, I was highly complimentary of your professionalism. You do a really good job. So I was just thinking of a um sort of the fundamental question I wanted to ask you. When you think, how many localities do you do audits for? Do you do audits for, would you say?
Counties, I do four counties.
Four counties?
Yeah. Um and then towns, another, there are a couple of very small towns, I won't count those, another three towns.
Okay. And when you, when you come to Rappahannock County and you work with our treasurer or Bonnie and Gary and what's the first word that comes to mind when you get geared up to come to Rappahannock County to work here? Uh you, you, are you excited? Are you worried?
Exciting is not a word we use in our profession.
I think that says it right.
Exciting is not a good thing necessarily.
Exactly, yeah, exciting is not a good, worried, never worried. Um no, you know, our job is to be professionally skeptic.
Sure.
So, you know, we're not worried of any specific thing. Like I said, there's, there were no journal entries this year. Some of the other places I go to do not have that same comment. Um so, yeah.
Journal entries, meaning outside the general ledger, basically, adjustments.
Yeah, something that needs to be adjusted, exactly, yeah.
Um and then without calling out any of the other places you work, um how, how often do you, and I know I asked you this last year, but I just love asking the question.
Yeah.
Um how often you come across a local, a locality that is carrying zero debt?
Uh I don't wanna say never, but very rarely. Yeah.
Okay, and then um I know there's no, unlike a, a typical corporate financial statement, there's no cash flow analysis embedded in this, because this is government.
Right.
Um but just from a, from a cash, cash on hand, cash flow position, certainly you've gotten a taste of, you've got a taste of our, our liquid assets and where they stand in relation to the flow of tax revenue. And how do you feel about that? How do you feel about our overall position?
Yeah, no cause for concern there. Uh you know, the one ratio we would look at there would be your unassigned fund balance in the general fund. And this, we usually just kind of look at the general fund, you know, that kind of runs the general operations of the whole county. The other ones are kind of self-sufficient. You know, your unassigned fund balance in the general fund of eight point five million compared to your general fund expenditures of twenty-two point eight million. You know, I think kind of a, a standard is at least three months' worth of expenditures. Doing some quick math, you're, you know, more than covered there.
Okay. Um and I did, I did have a couple of specific questions. Um thank you for that. It's just nice to, to elicit compliments out of you about our county, even though I force them. But I, I mean, I, I feel like it's, every year it's been pretty clean. And I feel good where we are, and it's good to have outside validation from someone like you. I did have a question, and this might be a question for Bonnie or Gary. They might have a better handle on this. I, just looking at the um cash and cash equivalents on the asset side of the school board, um there's about, I'm just gonna round up and say it's a million dollars cash um on hand and, and on the school board side of things. And I'm just curious, from an accounting standpoint, is the school system sitting on that cash for, oh, okay?
So by law, the school board cannot have a fund balance at the end of the school year.
That was my question, okay.
What that cash is for is for any um payable that is accrued to fiscal twenty-five and any um, any payables that are accrued to fiscal twenty-five. That's what that is. Otherwise, they have no fund balance.
Okay, but um considering this is draft form, is it correct then for us to state in final form our audit and financial statement in such a way that would, that would show a fund balance on the school side at the end of the fiscal year? Um would the qualifiers that you just articulated be sufficient to leave that, leave that fund balance figure there once this is finalized, given what state law mandates?
The cash will remain there. The cash will remain showing there. But if we went to the, hey, you can probably direct me there more quickly.
Exhibit thirty-one, page one twenty-eight.
One twenty-eight. Yeah, great, excellent, thank you. So if you've made it to that page, that's your way so.
Yeah.
Under the school operating fund category?
Yep.
You look down to the very bottom, the fund balance at the end of the year is zero.
Okay. I would not have been able to make that connection without your help.
And, and that's why a number of times we'll say, when we're looking at the cash flow graph each month for the general fund, we'll say that this is not the fund balance, this is the cash flow. And those are two different things.
Yeah, I think from a public perception standpoint, my issue with the way this is presented is it leaves the impression that the school district is holding on to money and then asking for more. You see where I'm coming from? And I, I realize that I'm a simple person, but that's, that jumped out at me immediately. Um so it's helpful to have your explanation. I'm not being critical. I just, it, it leaves the impression that the school is holding a million dollars at the end of the year and then coming and asking for more, which is not the case, which is not.
It's not the case, yes, and this is, it's not the case.
Okay. Um and then Josh, my uh only question for you is, if I can quickly find it and I'm done, I thank my colleagues for indulging me here. On the expenditure side. Gosh darn it, I highlighted it. Sorry, everyone.
In the general fund?
Yeah, so there's a breakdown by expenditure category that has, for example, public safety. Oh, I got it, I got it. I'm looking at one, page one oh one.
Probably by function.
Oh, is that what it is? By function? So my question to you, um and just by way of background, I've been arguing that we need to present our fire and rescue-related expenditures in a more transparent sort of aggregate way so we can easily get a handle on what is, what is being spent on fire and rescue. And those, that's kind of inside baseball for you, but it's, it's something that I would like to see changed. And my question to you is, on page one oh one, for example, the way these expenditure categories are laid out, are we, are we restricted in the way that, that this exhibit is presented by virtue of some gap related to local government? Or can we do some customization of how this is presented in the future?
Uh you can customize this certainly. You know, it's, you have to break it out by public safety, public works, health and welfare, education, those, you know, functions. But other than that, you know, these departments, you can break out, you know, that contributions to fire department, rescue squad number. You can break that out into, you know, five, ten different lines if you wanted to, however. Yeah, that part is very.
Okay, I just didn't know how rigid the, the templates to which were what it might be, but.
And while we track the um fire ser- service fund from the fire levy is a separate fund from one hundred, it's collapsed in, in here.
Right, of course, this is not aligned with our general ledger, right?
So you, all of those, all of the fire levy money, all of everything is collapsed into these numbers. You see by, in, in the function, public safety and then into the subparts.
And then Josh, my last question, just comparing this to a, you know, a corporate financial statement, we, we obviously don't have a P N, we don't have a profit and loss statement here, right? I mean, because we're not, we're not in business. But what is, it like, just from a government accounting perspective, what is my best touchstone for, for the equivalent of a P N L within this financial statement?
The, probably the best equivalent would be exhibit five.
Okay.
Page eighteen, uh and that's just all your governmental funds there. You know, if, if you look at exhibit one and two, those are your entity-wide. So those, exhibit two is gonna be your uh, you know, for profit and loss. But that includes, you know, your changes in your net pension liability, your changes in your OPEB liabilities. And those are not real expenditures. Those are, you know, seven hundred thousand dollar swing in the pension liability this year, which is just based on an actuary number.
Yeah, right.
So that's why we kind of steer people to just, you know, stick to the fund statements that are the most useful. Um they're on the budgetary basis, which is kind of what governments run on.
So if exhibit five is, is what you would call our P N L?
Right.
Am I correct then, that's similar to what I brought up on page one oh one? That if we wanted to do some customization of exhibit five, we could? Or is this more rigid?
This one's a little bit more rigid, yeah. The, on one oh one, you can break it out into all those separate, um you know, different categories within public safety. But then this is more of a summarized version of that statement on.
And is this, uh it's called a statement of revenues, expenditures and changes in fund balances? That's P N, profit and loss. And so there we are, we are limited by local government gap?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And when we submit this to the state, everybody else submits it to the state. And then there's a gigantic report from everybody.
Which requires a uniformity.
Yeah, and that's, they're using, the bulk of that comparative cost report is coming from exhibit five.
State, state level aggregation requires standardization. Okay, that's all I have.
But it's, so aside from sort of fiscal policy though, um in the four years that I have been here, I feel like, and I'm gonna give big kudos to Bonnie here, this is basically saying that everything that we've given you looks good.
In terms of the processes?
Yeah.
How everything's broken down and broken out and how it was reviewed, there are no material deficiencies.
No deficiencies in controls, no difficulties in dealing with management, no disagreements. Um a kind of a clean opinion, obviously, and then a clean report. You know, no adj, no adjusting entries or anything, so kind of as clean as can be in everything that we looked at, yeah.
So from my perspective, I just wanna give a huge thank you to staff. Because you guys have, I mean, there's a big lift every year. I know that this is kind of the bulk of your job is doing, doing the numbers here.
It is, and believe it or not, I actually enjoy it.
I believe you do. I think you have to.
You, you get excited, you get excited.
It's good enough to get excited about it. That's it, you know, it's good.
Sitting here as a board, though, I mean, I can't hear anything better than that. Because if you were to walk in and say, actually.
There, there are many times when that happens.
Yeah, and there are times when I'm, so, thank you.
And I'd be even missed if I didn't say a huge part of this is also Debbie Neff.
Yes, and thank you, Debbie Neff, absolutely.
And it's Bonnie and Debbie working very closely, very well.
It's great. That's amazing.
Uh when Ms. Smith and I joined the county eight years ago, these were reported in February uh with a December due date. And that was one of the commitments that I think the board then made was we're gonna get this done on time and.
And they're gonna be clean.
And they're gonna be clean. And so.
What's, what's the duration of the audit process? When you start?
After the budgets and targets.
It's all year.
It's half budget, half of the audit.
Yeah, it kind of depends. So you guys use an outside consultant to help get the audit stuff together for us as well. And that's probably, you know, part of the audit process for, you know, staff starts before we come in. You know, we'd get all the files from them usually early October-ish. Um and it's usually pretty much a full week blocked off for me and my team. And then, you know, to get the report together is another forty to fifty hours to get the whole thing together.
So we're your favorite client?
You guys are number one on the, December first gets you to number one on the list. Yeah, love it.
And Bonnie, the um fund balance components that uh we passed, was that this year?
Yeah.
Yes, it was this year in May.
I am just wondering if they took a look at that policy that we now have as a board um to review it in any way, to say thumbs up, thumbs down, not enough, too much?
I don't think that I ran that by, Josh. I think that I rely more on the GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, best practices.
Yeah.
Um which I can't imagine that Robinson Farmer Cox would disagree with.
Yep.
When, when we drafted that and the board ultimately adopted it.
Yep. Excellent.
Given that's a board policy now, is that something that RFC will be looking at going forward? Because it wouldn't have affected FY twenty-five.
That's actually one of the, the notes that.
Yeah, one of the notes will be updated. You know, we certainly look at policies. We're not gonna change any policies. You know, we don't have the right to do that, obviously, but um we look at that. If there's any glaring issue or anything that's out of line with GAAP, out of line with, you know, standards, we would bring to your attention.
Yeah, because we've raised with you before and you appropriately said not our place to find was on debt, uh debt capacity.
Yeah.
And, but presumably you keep an eye on that at least in passing through the audit process.
Right.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for having me.
Thanks for getting this together.
Yeah, and like I said, we'll get the finalized version.
And all of the fire department audits are up to speed now too, right?
Yes, the, um and one of Josh's coworkers is handling, I think it rolls up to Josh, the fire department audits, they're all caught up. Gigi is back in the stable and she's, was doing a great job back. They let her out to other places. They pulled her back and now we're back on track.
Yeah, so, and she's, I think we got those caught up.
Yes.
Um and so hopefully that's.
Excellent.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Safe travels. Watch out for the deer.
Safe travels. Thanks for coming up.
Great.
Yes, it's motion to, oh, is there a, there? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I still think it's your planning commission.